Good evening and welcome to the 7:30 meeting, regular meeting of Lynchburg City Council. Please stand for invocation by Councilmember Nelson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
May we bow our heads? We give thanks for our many blessings and the privilege to serve our citizens. May we be mindful of those whose lives and futures are fraught with peril, hardships, and despair. We pray that tonight's deliberations reflect tolerance, courtesy, and a steadfast conviction to be forthright and just. May we especially be principled in purpose, find clarity of thought, show soundness of reason, display integrity in judgment, and have purity of conscience. And as our nation just celebrated the exploits of the greatest generation, yet we continue to confront, devices political challenges. Let us commit ourselves to demonstrate statesmanship, reject uncompromising partisanship, refrain from labeling those with whom we disagree, reject vulgarities and exclusivity embraced by some in Washington and among popular entertainment media, keep our focus on inclusive representative democracy, and boldly respect the rule of law. And when we leave this chamber, may it be said that our actions displayed a wisdom and a vision that is pleasing to a divine will and purpose. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Tonight's city council agenda is divided into four sections: the consent agenda, public comment, public hearing, and general business. The first section is the consent agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved second.
All right, thank you. The motion has been moved in second. Please cast your vote. Oh, maybe because the other two aren't here to press. Or absent. You want to hit the absent? Yeah. No, obviously. I tell you, if you want to go ahead and hit abstain, and they'll hit abstain, and we'll see if that works for us. Two of our council members were unable to...
We've got to re-hit vote.
Okay. Yeah, re-hit your vote. There we go. Thank you. It passes five with two in absentia. Next are public comments, and during public comments, individual...
You're voting with me next time.
I got you. Thank you for filling in. And we do have two council members, I'll just let the viewing audience know, who had a previous engagement this evening that was really important to that organization, and also it's election day for one of our council members, so thank you. During public comments, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, city council takes comments made during the public comments section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. Tonight, we will hear from a citizen, Salvatore Manastra. Feel free to come forward. Thank you. And someone else is coming with him, and so they'll...
Mr. Larry Fink, he's a member of Rolling Thunder.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fink, and you all are going to share comments just because of the time, so thank you very much.
All right, I just want to, I guess, read a couple things. Good evening to all. My name is Salvatore Manastra. I am a Vietnam combat veteran. I live at 750 Washoe Mill Road in Hardy, Virginia. I'm here to request the city council of Lynchburg, Virginia, to pass a resolution to fly the "Prison of War Missing in Action" flag on all Lynchburg poles under the American flag. This is a reminder of the sons and daughters who gave their full devotion to the city of Lynchburg and the state of Virginia. This is a reminder for all the wars Virginia has sacrificed, their sons and daughters. We need to educate our children of these sacrifices that their fathers, mothers, brothers, sisters, uncles, and aunts have made. Many veterans have never made it home. Let Lynchburg be one of the cities who honors its veterans and the state of Virginia. I also want to add that I went to Bedford County, and they also passed, they passed a resolution, which I'm very proud of that. And now I'll have Larry speak to answer questions.
The POW/MIA flag, if you're not familiar with it, looks like this. It says, "You are not forgotten." One of our mission statements for Rolling Thunder is that we get the message out that a total of about 93,000 people have been sent to war and then left behind in POW and MIA situations. Right now, in Vietnam, there's 1,589 still missing. And Gold Star Mother designed this flag and presented it to the government. The United States Congress approved this flag, and the stars and stripes are the only two that have been approved by Congress. In previous city councils, you have approved that we put a POW/MIA bench in the airport. When you walk past the main entrance where the flag is, there is a POW/MIA bench that's to tell the people that are being deployed, the men and women, that we won't forget them when they leave. And the wars are fought different. We don't have many left behind. We're not throwing 500,000 people at a beach and then trying to figure out what happened. But we still have to stay on them by keeping the records and finding the families' lost souls. Any questions about the POW/MIA flag that I can answer?
No, thank you. And what we'll do is it will be taken under advisement by council, and if there's anything you'd like to leave, feel free to leave anything in writing that you need with our clerk, Robin Craig, who's right there at the end.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
No, thank you. All right, thank you. Next is the public hearing. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter referred to council for deliberation. Public hearing, it's number three, to receive comments regarding the City of Lynchburg substantial amendment number one to the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, program year 2018, fiscal year 2019, annual action plan. The purpose of the substantial amendment is to add a new project utilizing unspent Bluff Walk Section 108 loan proceeds totaling $1,250,000 for the design of the new Lynchburg Police Department headquarters. And staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Walker.
Good evening, Mayor Tweedy. Vice Mayor Dolan and members of council. As you have stated, Mayor Tweedy, tonight's city council is conducting a public hearing to amend the fiscal year 2019 CDBG and Home Program Annual Action Plan in order to appropriate $1,250,000 of the Bluff Walk Section 108 loan repayment proceeds and incorporate those funds into the fiscal year 2019 CDBG fund and annual action plan. On July 10, 2018, city council approved the projects and submission of the fiscal year 2019 annual action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Tonight's public hearing is required according to the city's Citizen Participation Plan for the CDBG program, and is considered a substantial amendment to the annual action plan, as the fiscal year 2019 CDBG budget will be increased by more than 25%, and a new project is proposed. This amendment proposes to add a CDBG project utilizing the unspent Bluff Walk Section 108 loan repayment proceeds to partially fund the design of the new Lynchburg Police Department headquarters. The new headquarters will be located at 1301 and 1305 Kemper Street. The properties are located in a CDBG-targeted census tract and will include a citywide service area in which at least 51% of the citizens are low to moderate income persons. The Bluff Walk loan repayment proceeds are available as a result of the repayment of the HUD's Section 108 loan that was issued to the city in June 2003. These loan funds were used by Bluff Walk LLC to rehabilitate and construct the Craddock Hotel, Shoemaker's Grill, and Waterstone Restaurant. The city received full repayment of the loan funds in November 2018 and remitted the final payoff to HUD of the original Section 108 loan issued to the city. With the appropriation of these funds tonight, there will be $200,693 remaining in the Section 108 loan repayment account. These remaining funds are currently earmarked to be used for a future affordable housing project and/or projects. A public notice for this meeting was published in the news in advance and through social media. Prior to this meeting, city staff had not received any public comments regarding the substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2019 annual action plan.
All right, thank you, Ms. Walker. Is there anyone to make a presentation? All right, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, thank you. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Council, what is your pleasure? Yes, Councilmember Higginson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question, Ms. Walker. Is there a reason that the 200,000 needs to stay in for a future affordable housing project? Because I know on your report, it says that most of it will cover the design. Why don't we take the extra 200,000 and cover the full design?
Right.
Yes?
You might recall that in my proposed FY 2020 budget, I proposed that we use part of this Bluff Walk funding for a future affordable housing project. One of council's priorities during this past year is to focus on affordable housing. We'll be coming forward later this summer with a report on affordable housing, and because these funds need to be used in a census eligible, in an eligible census tract, CDBG-eligible census tract, I proposed that we use the $200,000 towards affordable housing. There is nothing to say that it has to be used. That is your pleasure. It was only my recommendation.
So the whole amount could be used for the police station, because the police station, the proposed police station is in the census tract?
Correct. Correct. That is correct, but it is my understanding, and Ms. Walker will need to verify this, that if you want to use the full amount for partial funding for the design of the police station, we would need to hold another public hearing.
No.
Correct, because I only advertised the $1,250,000.
So I'll make a motion for approval as presented.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion is made. Councilmember Higginson.
And then I'll add that, you know, I think it would be wise, you know, I recognize that this 200,000 could be used for something of which yet is to be designed or yet to be thought of. I would recommend that we do at a later date, obviously we can't tonight, take this additional 200,000 and use that to help as quickly as we can to go to the police station so we can make sure the design is done, and, but obviously that's not in the motion now, because you mentioned it had to be advertised, but I would like to see us do that as quickly as possible. We have plans that, of an actual structure that is needed versus something that is hypothetical. I'd rather use it for the thing that we know of and as know is needed, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Higginson. Councilmember Wright?
Second.
All right, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question either for the city manager or Ms. Walker. I don't think there's any question that this is a very positive circumstance, that Bluff Walk LLC was able to repay these funds. It's also very positive that these funds could be used to advance the steps toward obtaining and realizing a new police station. My question is whether or not the administration has a position on whether SEDAC should review this proposal, in that the funds 18 years ago or so were denied. They could have been allocated for community projects, and instead they went to pay interest for the Bluff Walk development. Therefore, there were community programs and projects that were told there wasn't sufficient funding for them. And then just recently, when we assessed and analyzed the projects this past late winter and spring for this year, there wasn't not enough money to go around to address all the projects of the community nonprofits who were applying, and the representation would be made that if additional funds were identified, and at that time, it was thought that it would be coming from the federal government in this year's allocation, but technically speaking, I think these are new funds that now are unexpectedly available. Should SEDAC have any voice, do they need to have a voice, or should they have a voice in approving the use of these funds for a police station instead of some of the other nonprofit goals that they had discussed and we had to say no to?
Let me take that. There was no requirement from HUD that this needed to go through SEDAC, and because we are looking for funding for the police department, we just made a judgment call that we would bring it to a public hearing, which gives citizens an opportunity to comment on the funding, on the direction of the funding. So it certainly could have gone to SEDAC, and if you wanted to, we could retreat and do that.
Do you have any, and that's the beginning of my question, do you have any position as to whether that might be a good idea to get a consensus or a sense of SEDAC's wishes with regard to this? I can't imagine that they would object to it, but they didn't know about it, and this decision is made from the top and not community-based. That's all my concern.
Sure. I would just say that there is an opportunity for public input and community input at the public hearing, and it was a judgment call, and again, I could have gone either way, quite frankly.
All right, thank you. You answered my question.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, please cast your vote. Okay. Thank you, and the motion passes five with two absent. Thank you.
Does the council want me to come back and advertise for the additional funds to go towards the police department? Staff needs direction on that.
Motion?
Aye.
I'd make a motion. We do that, and then we can again hear, as Councilmember Nelson mentioned, we could hear from the public. The other opportunity would be to say, "Let's take this 200,000 and use it to pay off the police station design," or it could go maybe to SEDAC, and then SEDAC could kind of wade through if they wanted to, you know, use it in some other way. But if you have a public hearing on it, at least then we could hear comments. So I'll make a motion that we do that.
I'll second that.
And nothing else to add, but...
Okay, Dan, the vice mayor wants to know that to bring back the 200,000, that it would go to the police department, and/or at discussion at that time, that it potentially could go to SEDAC for a review. And so I'll defer to Councilmember Higginson.
So my motion was, so they're going to have to advertise it that it would go to the police station.
Right.
And so when you do that, that's the police station, the design of the police station, when you advertise that, you also have to advertise a public hearing. So at that public hearing, people say, "No, we don't want it to go to the design of the police station. We'd like it to go to Miriam's house," or somebody other things.
263 or whatever.
There'll be the 200,000, yeah, that's left over, rather than creating a new program, is my point.
Was there some, sorry, was there some magic to that? Five million? So you could have been 1.4, 5.
I think I have been. But I knew that affordable housing was a priority, and I don't have a funding source for that, so I thought $200,000 would be a good start.
A good start for...
For affordable housing, to do something relative to affordable housing, whether it's an incentive for a program, whether it's a match for a grant, that's to be determined.
Aye.
And I just wanted to follow up with that, to say that we did have the Affordable Housing Report come to us from the Housing Collaborative, and so the city, our Community Development Team and City Manager's Office is working to bring a report back to the Housing Collaborative on best practices from other cities as far as housing, affordable housing language and/or planning and projects. So that group is waiting for the report, which I think will be done this summer.
We are planning to bring that to you at your August work session.
Okay, so that, so to have that discussion at the time, and then, again, to let SEDAC members know that that may be an opportunity to come voice their opinion on the 200,000, but also that's the reason why I think the city manager wanted to put something towards it. Councilmember Nelson, he had his hand.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think you've just touched on what I was going to say, and that is, I ask if SEDAC members could be specifically notified in some email blast that this is an issue, and we're reaching out to them in lieu of having a call meeting to give their feedback, either through your agency or actually be here and speak to us at the public hearing.
Councilmember Higginson.
One other question, I guess to kind of follow up with Councilmember Wright. How much was the tentative design of the police station? Like 2 million?
It's between, we think, 2.5 and 3 million. So this is not all of it.
It's not all of it, but at least it's something that we're going to have to do anyway, so here's a pot, might as well...
So you want that public hearing with the presentation on affordable housing and how you might use that, that 200,000?
So the report from the Internal Affordable Housing Group does not have a recommendation for funding for anything specific, and it's more focused on research and best practices and leading practices in affordable housing.
Like I was saying, it sounds like we could spend the 200,000 on the police station, or we could hold it to seed funding for whatever the recommendations might be after, you know, we've sort of dug into that report. So maybe we should hold off, it sounds like we should wait for that report before we do a public hearing and decide what to do with the 200,000. Does that sound right?
I guess the thing is, you have something that you know. We know we need a police station. We know we need to do it. We know we need to spend the money on it. We're not even sure what the Housing Collaborative would say, and then we're not even sure when that would come, maybe in a couple months, and so I just think, and by that time, there'll be other funds, you know, that can be utilized, because there's going to have to be other funds for the police station, so.
So what question? Would it delay you to align the two conversations?
No.
Could I just say that I need to advertise a specific project for the funds to be directed to? So if you're going to think about an affordable housing project, then we need to wait until we know what that project is.
And that's why my motion, I think, was specific, to take this 200,000, 263 or whatever it was, to put into the actual, utilize the rest of the money to finish with the police station, and at that time, we'll be having a public hearing. So at that time, when we're having the public hearing, if the public and the SEDAC can weigh in and say, "No, no, no, don't spend it on that," we can table it and not vote for it, but, you know, I think this kind of moves us down the path of what we're going to do ultimately.
Okay, so we do have Councilmember Nelson suggesting notifying the SEDAC committee specifically of the public hearing.
Sure.
And so that can be an action from this conversation. All right. All right, is any further discussion?
We're voting to bring it back.
We're voting to bring it back for a, yes, for a public hearing regarding advertising it towards the police department.
Right.
Additional funding.
Yep.
All right.
Do I need to vote for Turner's too?
I think she's got it now. Thank you very much.
I did need to vote Turner's.
And the motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Well, five with two absent. All right, and number four, was the public hearing for the petition of the Rebkey Company to vacate 90 and 2000ths of an acre portion of Jackson Street, but this has been rescheduled to June 25th due to the June 11th PDC meeting being rescheduled to June 25th. So that public hearing will be held on June 25th. Next is the public hearing regarding the petition of Lynchburg Church of God Trustees for a conditional use permit at 428 Breeze Wood Drive to allow the use of an existing structure as church offices in an R3 medium-density residential district. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request, and Mr. Martin.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the subject property is recommended for medium-density residential uses on the city's future land use map. Institutional uses that are compatible in scale with single-family dwellings may be appropriate in these areas. This site is directly adjacent to the existing church facilities, and the addition of church offices in the basement of the structure should have little to no impact on the surrounding area. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on May the 8th and recommended approval of the conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone here to make a presentation?
Good evening. I'm Pastor Mike Kirby of the Passion Community Church, formerly known as Lynchburg Church of God. We've been operating as a passion community for the last five years. I've been the pastor there, and the honor to serve this city for the last 10 years. And when we moved here, my wife and I moved here, we moved to a church that was about to shut its doors, and so God has blessed our community, and we have used creativity to reach out to our community. In fact, God has blessed us with a tremendous amount of growth. One of that factors is the fact that we just had, two weeks ago, had our 40th baby born to our congregation, and since I've been the pastor, and we have four expecting mothers, at least the ones that we know of. And so because of that growth, we've had a tremendous amount of children. The city council allowed us to build in addition to our building to handle our children and our children's ministry, but our children's ministry continues to grow. So the use of offices next door isn't to allow us to have cushier settings. In fact, right now, I've already given up my office, and I'm sharing an office with my associate pastor, our bookkeeper, and secretary, as well as two other staff pastors. We're all in one office. So I do a lot of my work in a coffee shop and my home. This would allow us to go in and use a basement that is not being used right now. We own the, we own the land and the building outright. We have no debt on the building, and so we have plans to go in and convert it to offices to allow us to meet with our people, conduct meetings, and to do the various business of the church.
All right, thank you, Pastor Kirby, and thank you for the work you're doing for the growth. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, there's no rebuttal needed, so the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Council, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Higginson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit.
I'll second.
All right, the motion has been made in second, and I will refer back to Councilmember Higginson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, you know, this is just, it's exciting to hear, Pastor, about the growth, about new children playing and having them in a safe environment and teaching them. It's fabulous. This is what communities are about, and it's neat that when you're outgrowing your facility, you got ways to figure it out. So I hope we all approve this. I've driven by there several times, and you're right. I mean, I remember seeing like three cars out there, and now they're everywhere, all over the grass, and which is good to see, so it's nice to see. Keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you very much for coming, and congratulations on the growth, and I'm excited to vote for this.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion? If not, please cast your vote. And the motion passes five with two absent. Good luck with the project, and thank you very much. Next is the petition... Next is the petition of Oak Link LLC to rezone approximately 39 acres at 207, 301, 305, 400, 401, 405, 408, 409, 411, 412, 415, 416, 417, 420, 421, 424, 425, 428, 429, 432, and 436 Preserve Drive, and then 100, 101, 102, 103, 104, 104A, 105, 106, 107, 108, 109, 110, 111, and 112 Clopton Court to remove a previously approved proffer requiring the construction of a left turn lane from Link Road onto Preserve Drive. And staff will provide a brief summary of the request, and this is Mr. Martin.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, the subject properties were rezoned on April 10th, 2012. Voluntarily submitted proffer submitted and accepted by council at that time became part of the zoning for the property. So, any amendments to proffers require a rezoning to be approved by City Council. Oak Link LLC is requesting to remove the previously approved proffer that required the construction of a left turn lane from Link Road onto Preserve Drive, and this was done in lieu of submitting a traffic study in 2012. The petitioner recently submitted a traffic study indicated that the left turn lane is not warranted, and the city engineer has reviewed that study and concurs with the conclusion. The petitioner is also proffering to reduce the total number of units from 78 to 59. The total numbers of units in the entire development would be 68, which includes portions of the property not subject to the zoning petition. As the property was being developed, work began on moving utility poles and lines in order to facilitate the construction of the left turn lane. American Electric Power, AEP, moved their poles and lines under the city's franchise agreement because the left turn lane was proceeding with construction. At the time this petition was submitted, Verizon had not moved lines to the new poles and felt that they were no longer obligated to do so at their cost since the turn lane may not be constructed. At the time, the petitioner also felt that they were not obligated to fund the relocation. When this was originally submitted, city staff was concerned that if the proffer was removed, the city may have to fund the relocation of the lines or two sets of poles would remain in the area. This led to the Planning Commission postponing action on the item at its April 24th meeting. Subsequently, staff received emails verifying that Verizon would in fact remove the lines at their cost and was working to do so. Following that, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning on May 8th, 2019. Information received from the petitioner yesterday, June the 10th, indicated that the relocation work would not be completed until additional funding was received to complete the work. The petitioner has indicated in an email that they do intend to fund that. However, at this point, the city is still not at a point of having full assurance that that will occur, and, but we have no reason to believe that they would not do so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone to make a presentation? Come on forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. How are you?
Good evening.
Since the time that we've received this updated traffic study, we've reached out to all the owners that have bought property in the Preserve, and because we had obligated ourselves to build that regardless of whether VDOT required it or not, we went to all of our owners and asked them to give us their vote. One thing that was really interesting that came out of the traffic study was that from Otterview Place, which is just a little bit south from the entrance of the Preserve, and over to the stoplight that is at the top of Link Road, there have been 14 accidents in the last five years. Not a single one of them is where we enter onto Boonsborough, onto Link Road. You know, we've got great visibility. It's a straight stretch. You have accidents to the right and accidents to the left. And what's really come out of this for our owners to give up something that we'd already committed to and that would not have costed them anything was that they were opposed, as folks who used, came in and out every day, what they saw was, was that expanding to additional lanes right at the entrance of the development was going to create a really tough left-hand turn for them coming out with more traffic and with visibility that would, with less visibility. The other thing, too, is for pedestrians, we have a lot of people that like to come over and walk through there, and we put up stations for folks that walk their dogs and all that. And crossing Link Road right there is something you want to be pretty careful about to start with. Right where our entrance is, you get a great shot of what's coming to the left and the right, but, I mean, common sense and logic just leads you to believe that making that intersection more complex is, in the long run, is not going to do any good. And what our people feel, and what I feel from seven or eight years of making an average of a trip or two up there every day, is there, you don't ever have a delay getting into, into the Preserve. I mean, it's, you just don't. The only way you'd ever have a delay would be if traffic backed up from the stoplight that's at the, at the north end of Link Road all the way beyond our entrance. And even at that, if it was blocked for more than a few seconds, somebody would send you right through. So, you know, we're dominated by, we're primarily a seniors' community, and we just don't, we don't have a rush hour up there. So, what we've come to is, is that, is that it's the unintended consequences of this that are really the problem with this whole thing. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? And is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing that there's not, there's no rebuttal needed, so public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Council, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Huglason?
There's lots of questions here.
All right.
You know, typically when a proffer is submitted, it's submitted for permanence, I mean, and it's agreed to, ahead of time, and said that we're going to put in this turning lane, and because of that, council votes in favor or whatever, based on what is stated there. So, seven years goes by, a commitment was made, and then not, isn't it normally have to be done fairly soon, once it was, the proffer was accepted and approved, the rezoning? How can it be seven years and they still haven't built that turn lane?
The proffer was tied to a certain phase of the development.
Okay.
Which they hadn't exceeded yet.
They hadn't exceeded? So, it's not like seven years late?
No, it's just they hadn't got to that stage of the development yet.
And then you mentioned, so that, it sounds like it really is, that isn't a concern to you?
No, the only concern, there, I mean, the issue of whether the left turn lane is needed or not is clear from the traffic study, and I think the existing traffic conditions show that. Really, the big issue here is the two sets of utility lines that are left, and staff's concern was, is that staff did not want the city to be left having to fund the cost of removing essentially what was an ISOL. It seems like the petitioner is making headways having those lines to be removed. However, at this point in time, we have no full assurance that they are going to do so.
So, until we get full assurance, it'd probably be wise to not remove the only bargaining chip that we have in here, I would assume.
That is something for council to discuss, but, yes, sir.
And so, with that, you know, I can appreciate the fact of what that, the survey, I mean, the traffic study says, but until that assurance is there, what's that amount? I was reading somewhere around 55,000 that the city may have to pay.
No, it's actually, the last estimate that's come back from Mr. Shea is right around between 10 and 15,000 dollars.
Okay. And with that, I would assume that would be a whole lot less than the developer would have had to pay for a left turn lane.
Yes.
And so, if there's a way that they could, you know, not put that burden on the city and the city taxpayers for something that they agreed to, a way that they could actually fund it, if there is, you know, assure that the city taxpayers aren't going to be paying for it, is there language that could be put in there to that effect that you could think of, or?
Quite possibly. They could have chosen to proffer to move them. This has really evolved since it was first submitted. Again, we have no reason to believe that they won't follow through with moving the lines. I'm sure they want to have it done so, but it's staff's job to look out for the best interest of the city, and either the two sets of lines will remain or we would possibly have to fund doing that, so.
And so, neither of which is good, and so, maybe the best thing would be to table this until we can get that assurance or get those lines moved or get the, so the city taxpayers don't have to pay for it. That kind of sounds like a, and then we could remove that lane and remove the proffer. I think that would sound like a good solution.
Councilmember, further discussion? Vice Mayor Dola.
Yeah, I can tell you, I travel Link Road probably three and sometimes four times a day, and I would hate to see a left-hand turn going there because I can, I know. What I'd actually like to see is a crosswalks up at the corner of Boonsborough Road and Link, so that that is a very dangerous, or a right turn, when they put that right turn in there, that's going to be even more dangerous for people. I'd like to see a little walk sign up there, totally unrelated to this, but.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wright?
I just, I thought maybe I'm going around.
Well, no, I, I agree. I mean, obviously, I don't think the taxpayers should be on the hook for that second set of utility lines. And so, I don't know if the developers would be willing to agree to, if Verizon fails to remove the lines, that they will agree then to remove it at the expense of the development as opposed to the taxpayers' expense. That seems to me like a fair resolution.
And since that isn't on there, I mean, if they agree to it, that'd be great, and I guess the only other alternative we have is to table it until that happens. Is that, Walter, you were about ready to?
Remember, this, excuse me, this was a conditional rezoning. It wasn't offered as a proffer, so you can't add or amend any language tonight. You can either postpone action on the item, and you have up to 12 months to act on a zoning petition, so you can postpone action on it for a couple of months to see if the poles are removed and bring it back later on if the poles are removed, and then vote to remove the condition, if you'd like to do that.
Certainly, in the interim, they're not compelled to construct the turn lane in the interim, so they could hold off, there's no obligation for them to do, take any action in the meantime.
It sounds like that the city would probably have to compel the construction of the turn lane by bringing in action to enforce the proffer, and the city certainly hasn't had any discussions about doing that.
So, the motion to table then would be?
Actually, a motion to postpone indefinitely and pending the removal of the utility poles.
I'll make that motion to postpone indefinitely.
I'll second it.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded. Further discussion? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask Mr. Shea a question. If you, if you would come back up to the microphone, please?
Yes.
Obviously, at this point, you were requesting to be relieved of the duty to construct that lane. If council passes this, the current motion, which is to basically hold the status quo, not require you to do anything, but to just keep things in abeyance until additional information comes through or somebody changes their posture, does that prejudice the developer in any way whatsoever? Do you?
Well, you know, what we'd like is to be able to make payment to Verizon based on the pricing of the job, have the job order be on their books and confirm to the city, and then we'd like to get going before winter comes. We don't have, we, it can be a slow weight if you're not a top priority, and, you know, the day you cut on the news and there's a tornado in the middle of America, everybody's gone that takes care of these kind of things. And so, our biggest, we would expect to be able to have the job on the books based on our most, we've had some real success working with what started out to be some, some problems, trying to get this thing resolved by Verizon, and we've had an engineer with Verizon that's just done a terrific job of making this all work. And he's indicated to us as recently as yesterday morning that we should be able to wrap this up and get this job on the books within the next week to 10 days. And so, we would like to confirm that we've done that and then be in a position to move ahead.
That was one concern. The other concern I have is, I also travel that road daily, sometimes multiple times a day. My experience as the traffic studies show is that the collisions don't generally occur in that straight stretch where the turn into the Preserve is located. They occur at one of the corners further up toward Boonsborough Road or back at the top of Royal Boulevard.
Yours is the toughest.
But occasionally, there are down trees falling from the west side of Link Road, across the road, and they hit those power lines or those telephone lines, and it requires Verizon to come out and replace their lines. And I would think it would be in Verizon's interest to move that line further to the east away from the path of a falling tree on the west side of Link Road.
Yes, yes.
And therefore, they would be almost absolved of any future likelihood to have to do repairs in that section.
And those poles are in place because AEP is actually the one that is, you know, they've moved, they've set up this second row of poles that is to the east.
We can, we can see them on the picture up there, so that just moving the lines would...
And of course, we've given the easements to the city also, not only for any eventuality of a turn lane being needed, but also for a turn lane that's up at the corner of Link whenever the city would be in a, I'm sure we'd all like to be able to do that tomorrow. I mean, everybody knows that what Link Road really needs is a turn lane at that stoplight. And so, that's all, that's all in place when it, when it reaches a point where, you know, the city can take that on.
Do you have any objection to council passing the motion that's currently before us to delay this until the parties may make some progress in resolving who's going to do what?
What we need to do, would we need to come back before you, or would it be as simple as?
We're just not acting on it.
We won't move forward until we have that job on the books?
I think we're just not acting on it tonight.
I beg your pardon?
We are not acting on your request to relieve you of the proffer tonight. We're postponing that decision until a later time, as I understand the motion.
Right, that's what the motion is.
And then they would, he would, and what would it be that we, what would it be that we would present that would put us in a position to come back before you, or for you to make your final decision?
I think a member of council would have to request that it be brought up again, or you.
Right. Would you notify, would he notify Mr. Martin that it's on the books and/or it's beginning, and then that would, could Mr. Martin notify us, and then we would bring it back at that time? Is that acceptable?
And what would be the time, what we need to?
Just to making sure that these poles are not paid for by the city taxpayers.
I understand that. Now, we have no problem.
We've all agreed with the, with the traffic and the turning lane, it's one side's done.
We're just trying to be able to bid this job out and not miss the whole, we've got seven contracts now and more coming in.
Right, you would proceed with what you're doing, and then once that's on the books and you all are scheduled to do what you need to do, if you would just notify Mr. Martin, and then he will notify us that that is proceeding as we're planning.
Would that come back before a public hearing, or would that be something that the council could act on in your own session?
Mr. Irwin?
Public hearing is over. Council would not have to hold another public hearing.
All right.
That's good.
So, thank you. That's, okay, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, so, no further discussion. Please cast your vote on the motion that, as it stands. And the motion passed. And the motion passes five with two absents. Thank you very much. Next is the petition of Josh Lee for Trout Spring to amend the one future land use map from low-density residential to medium-density residential and to rezone approximately 5.91 acres located at thirteen oh six Laxton Road from R1 and three low-density residential to R3C use permit to allow the development of the property as fifty townhomes. And you have information from Mr. Erwin in front of you regarding that, just as a reminder for you, and I will now defer to Mr. Martin. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, on December eleventh, twenty eighteen, City Council conducted a public hearing concerning the petition to amend the future land use map, rezone 5.91 acres from R1 low-density residential to R3 medium-density residential conditional, and also for conditional use permit to allow the construction of the fifty townhome development with access being only from Laxton Road. After the public hearing on December eleventh, City Council decided, cited concerns with access to the development, access and land use, and tabled the petitions. The petitioner has since revised the concept plan by reducing the total number of units from fifty to forty and added an additional ingress egress point to Enterprise Drive and is requesting that City Council reconsider the petitions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone to make a presentation?
Good evening, everybody, good evening, council. It's been almost six months since we've first brought this up. In the time of doing so, we've had an opportunity to not only revise the plan, but take an opportunity to speak to a lot of the neighbors in the area. Um, I'm, what we wanted to do, I know initially the, the big conversation that we had was making sure that we had a, a development that was responsible, and what we've done is to kinda take the time to, to not only make sure that we were going to have a responsible development, but reduce the number of units that we were going to put forth and add that second, second access point, not only to, uh, there was another issue, I know Councilman Perro brought up at that point, that if there was ever an issue and we had only one access point, then it would not be in the, the city's interest because it would be in a county property. So we added the, the second access point, so that not only would we have the two that Mr. Prayer had, had requested, but also the same point to, uh, you know, give more access to our, you know, potential residents in the, in the community and also just to, to make it a little more advisable. When we went forward with this and, and started kinda planning it, since the last six months have kinda changed a few things, we've become recent owners of the property, so as, as a development group, we actually are the owners of the property now, and it's no longer in, in contractual basis. So we, we fully outright own the property, so we're, we're Lynchburg taxpayers now on the property. So it's, it's a little bit different, and we understand the concerns of, of all the residents and, and have tried the best we can to outreach to especially the, the two negative and opposition members. I, I don't think that those two are here tonight, I don't know if there's anybody new, but I know that we had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Morse, who we shared the driveway with and, and the access point with and had a great conversation with him, and I, I believe he, he's here tonight too to speak. But really, when it came down to, we just wanted to, to, to bring the plan back forth, and, and we've added a lot more tree buffers, I know a lot of people had a concern on the Windhurst side, um, but we, we did the best that we could and tried to make sure that we could bring forth a responsible development, keep in mind what we're doing for the community.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Please come forward.
Thank you, thank you everyone for, for the opportunity to speak with you. Can you hear me?
Yes, got you, thank you.
Yeah, I live, uh, right here to the bomb, as you see right there, at four thirty-five, and I'm right adjacent to the property, and I spoke with Mr. Lee on a few occasions, but until the first time I spoke with him, I was very concerned of what was gonna go on right there because I've lived there for twenty-three years. And, you know, nobody, you know, as I've grown older, I've realized that I get more and more opposed to change, but also I've learned that with change also come some good things once in a while, and I've, I've seen the layout, I've spoken with him a few times, and from what could be over there, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty excited about what he's doing. I mean, there could be a lot worse going on there. I think it's gonna look great from what he showed me and what he's talked to me about. I'm confident in the company. Um, I, I did some research, it looks like twenty-nine years they've been in business. So, um, like I said, I'm here in favor of it because I, I think it would look really, I think it would be a nice addition to the community.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Thomas Day, and I own a townhouse over in Windhurst, right across the street. And this is an area that is high-density traffic. A block down the road, you've got Lowe's, you've got Timberlake Road, high-density. You've got two public schools right across the street from, from this project, and just bukues of residential. And that's my concern, I mean, if he's talking forty, um, you can figure probably two to three cars per townhouse, it's gonna put it at eighty or a hundred and twenty additional cars in that area. I don't know if you've driven this area, been down by Lowe's, tried to make the light from Laxton to Greenview up there. I mean, this, it's, it's, it's a, it's a big traffic thing, potentially eighty to a hundred and twenty more cars there. And then, you know, you, you have other raw land behind the high school that could potentially go to the same thing. So, you know, you rezone, you, you move out of your low-density, you rezone to forty or whatever, then you get another developer come in over, you know, on this other raw land, and they say, well, you did it to, for, you know, this one, why can't we have it? So I just see the, the traffic snowballing, um, the roads are wide already, you got two You know, just think about it and I hope you'll consider it.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of council. You guys move very quickly tonight, I'm pleased. I just wanna point out that the city puts a lot of time and effort into planning its zoning. Future land use map has this as R1. It's R1 because the neighborhoods around it are single-family residential. Windhurst is R2, I'm sorry, I'm not sure of the name of the other neighborhood, it's R1. To change this would go against all of the planning, all of the effort, all of the foresight that a good number of people have given to the, to the city. Beyond that, it changes the character of these neighborhoods from single-family to, to multi-use, not multi-use, but, uh, but, um, much, much denser residential. And we all know in that part of town, there's gonna be a good amount of students in these homes, so you're gonna have, uh, multiple cars, more than a single-family would have. You're gonna have a lot more trips in and out, you're also gonna have rentals that are non-owner occupied and, uh, aren't kept up the same way that the single-family residents are. So, uh, I implore you to keep the zoning the same as it was planned to be, the same as it should be based on the neighborhoods around it. Thank you.
Can I have your name and?
David Mann.
David Mann, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? All right, if not, because there was opposition, do you have time for rebuttal?
So I guess I'll, I can, I'll split it into two parts, the rebuttal to the.
I'll just get you to come to the mic so that the viewing audience.
Yeah, absolutely, so I, I'll kinda split the rebuttal into two parts, because I'll have our engineer kinda speak about the traffic study, because there was, there was one that was done, and then I can speak more about the character aspect of the product. Totally understanding, and this is what had come up originally with the, the single-family nature of the Windhurst community, directly across the street from our property, or, because we own it now, is a townhouse community. The gentleman that, that spoke in opposition of it lives in a townhouse community. When we were thinking about this, originally when we took on this project, there was this concept of one of the gateways into Lynchburg, and this being one of them, uh, and it's at a higher elevation, so when we were taking on the project and considering using it, keeping in line with what was surrounding the area, that is true, there, there's schools in the area, there's single-family homes. Directly across the street from us is a townhouse community that has approximately thirty or so units. When we amended our plan from having fifty units down to forty, that was taken into consideration to make sure that we were staying in line with what was done in the general area, so it's not like we're coming completely out of line and, and doing a product like a big apartment building or something of that nature. So, we, we wanted to do, we most importantly wanted to have a responsible development when we did this, and that's kind of where we came up with this product that would stay in line with the Windhurst design elements, but still be in, keeping in mind with what, what is in the area. Andy, speak to the traffic aspect of it as well.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Andy Kleeback, I'm with Hurt and Profit here in Lynchburg. The issue of traffic came up during the first, um, time this came before council back in December, discussed that length at that time, and VDOT reviewed and concurred with the results of the traffic study at that time. We went a little bit above and beyond, um, the warrants as far as providing turn lanes and tapers at that time, and since then, we've reduced the number of units by twenty percent. We've also added an extra access point to the development, which would certainly take the load off of any one entrance to the property. So, our professional opinion is that any detrimental impacts are definitely mitigated by the revisions that have been made and the, again, to reiterate, the, the traffic study determined that there were no appreciable impacts resulting from the development. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. The rebuttal has been heard, and the public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Council, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Helgason?
Oh, I guess two things. One, you know, as, as some of the neighbors have said, and as the zoning shows, this is R1, so they're asking for a change from R1, and I don't know if I've heard a, a, a reason why it should be changed, especially when the neighbors, uh, understand that zoning and the future land use map says this is not gonna be high-density. Um, I appreciate the developer bringing down the density and coming up with other alternatives for entrance ways, um, but I'm still not convinced that this is, is good when you have neighbors there that are in single-family, they bought into single-family, it's R1. You know, and I, I do also real, so I, I'm prepared to vote against this resolution tonight. The person that I think brought this up the most was Councilmember Perro, who's obviously absent today, um, and he had some concerns as well, and as a representative of this ward, an alternative could be to table this one until we meet in here and, and he's able to be here with us, so those are, but if not, I'm prepared to vote against it tonight if we'd like.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan?
So I'm wondering why we let refer it back to the planning commission since there has changed significantly, and let the planning commission take another look at it.
I, I guess that is one, that is, I think it's an alternative that's put in there. The one thing is if, you know, a- and I can appreciate and, and respect for the developer, I don't wanna see him having to redesign plans if, if we don't like it. It's probably best before he spends thousands of more dollars on redesigning plans if we'd like it.
Well, isn't this plan a redesign from the original?
Yes, exactly, yep, yep, so that, that would be the only thing. Yeah.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two questions. First, from, from Mr. Martin, um, how's it going? So there are three resolutions here, and the, has the developer made the proffers in, in all three of the resol-, so in Resolution C, uh, it, you know, that'll be conducted in accordance with the site plan, and then the second is that all requirements of the, of VDOT for access shall be met prior to final site plan approval. And so I was just a little confused, which, which of the resolutions i- is being put forward, all three, and who's signed off on each of them?
Okay, so the only one that the petitioner had to proffer was the rezoning, and that was the ordinance. So you've got, you do have multiple things in front of you. You have Resolution A, which is to, um.
Amend?
To, uh, it was on.
To deny it, yeah.
Okay, and then the second one would be to approve it if you chose to do that. The ordinance, uh, the proffer was to be developed in substantial compliance with the site plan, and then the next one is the conditional use permit, and those conditions, Resolution C, which is a conditional use permit, is setting the conditions that council can set.
I see, so we have the option whether to change the zoning or issue a CUP?
Well, no, you, in an R3 district, you have to have a conditional use permit to do townhomes.
So it's, it's, you have to do both?
Yes, sir.
I mean, the first step would be to amend, the council's comprehensive plan says it won't approve any zoning project that's inconsistent with the future land use map. So the first was, step would be, if council supports this project, would be to amend the future land use map to allow this density. Then the second step would be to grant the rezoning, and then the third step would be to issue the conditional use permit. You'll need to do all three to approve the project.
Understood, thank you. And then, brother Mr. Lee, or is it Mr. Beasley?
Kleeback.
Kleeback, sorry, thank you. It was Mr. Beasley last time. One question, so last time, I think we had talked about access onto Enterprise Drive being really challenging, uh, and it wasn't advised, and, and then it comes back and seems to have been solved, and pretty easily, so I'm, I'm curious, what, what changed here?
The, the big challenge that we had is when we were on Enterprise Drive, looking at the elevation of where the townhomes would be, it's, it's a pretty severe drop back down to the Enterprise Drive side. The, the real reason I think everyone was really negative about it was the cost and the financial responsibility for us as a developer to actually cut in, and that's what, when we were looking at it, we originally were trying to intend to keep the, the fifty units, and comparatively from this plan to the original plan, you could, originally on that, that front block that was closest to the adjacent, you know, parallel with Enterprise Drive, there was two rows, and so when we eliminated the second row, shifted everything down more towards the Laxton roadside of things, um, we not only were able to get a better grade turning into it and also meet the, uh, there's our, there's already cutting through the median, and so we were able to actually meet that, that turn-in and that, that turnaround area. So it just, you know, we looked at it from a fiscal standpoint, it made, it's not in, in our best interest, but it made sense for the community, and we wanted to do as much as we could for, for the council to share that we're willing to, to, to work with you guys on the project.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There were two things that were of concern to me last time, and of course, that has been addressed with regard to the additional entrance on Enterprise Drive, and the other was the intense, the higher density. Both of those issues have been significantly addressed by this new site plan, and to that extent, the, my concerns have been resolved as to the opposition. I am concerned that we are absent two members of council. Councilmember Perro did say, and he agreed with, his concerns were my concerns. I'm not gonna speak for him, but I did speak to him today, and inasmuch as he told me, he's very satisfied with the new site plan, I think it might be appropriate that he have a voice in this, and if it's not unduly burdensome to the developers, carry this forward to another meeting so that they can have their seats and have their say. So I would, I would move that we do that as a substitute.
All right.
Table it until.
I think that's the main motion, I don't think there's.
Right, he didn't make a motion.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right, so the motion has been made to table this, and. All right, so the motion has been made to table this and second it. If there's further discussion, otherwise I will ask the developer, is that, because Councilmember Nelson said an undue burden, so is one more meeting an undue burden to have? It sounds like you have support, but I think it just...
If I make one more time, I'll get a yes, I guess that's...
Can't guarantee that.
I mean, I do...
Well, if you're going to talk, I need you to come to the podium again, but...
I appreciate what the council's doing, I totally understand what Councilman Nelson, I, I'd spoken to Councilman Perrow about it because I know he was, had one of the biggest interests in, in the second entrance, and when, when I sent it over to him, because I know I wanted him to review it, he, I don't, at the point that I spoke to him, he hadn't necessarily seen it, but when I described it to him, he was, it seemed like it was to his pleasure. We would prefer not, you know, because as soon as we can, since we own the property now, we want to try to get going, and, you know, like, as every developer says, winter's coming. And as soon as we can to kind of get in the ground and start rolling, we'd like to. And then obviously, there are certain things that we still have to do in order to kind of get going with that. The July meeting, that would, that would put us into July, July 26th, and that, you can kind of see where our timeline kind of gets a little...
June 25th. Right, June 25th.
June 25th, okay.
June 25th.
Six of seven, as I know it.
Right, because we're missing one.
It's going to be a late winter.
Councilmember Dolan is the only one who will be... So council, so we'll be missing one versus two if we postpone it, and it would be to the June 25th.
Sounds good, yes.
Okay.
It's just like, let's make a deal?
Yeah, let's make a deal, swap seats. So I do agree, I mean, Councilmember Perrow, it's, it's Ward, thank you, I was trying to think of the name, it's his ward and to have his voice here. So if we can, we're going to make the motion, the motion's been made a second, we'll go ahead and vote on tabling it until June 25th.
So is it, would it automatically be put on the agenda, or would we have to...
Right, it would automatically, no, it would automatically be put on the agenda.
Okay.
I guess the emotion, the motion goes to table, of which they think it could be the 26th, of which they may change it, or 27th.
Right, the 25th. Right, there, I can't see any reason why it would be changed, but...
And Vice Mayor Dolan will not be here. Okay.
All right, please cast your vote, thank you very much, please cast your vote. And the motion passes five with two absent, and it will be tabled until June 25th. Thank you. Next is general business. This section includes general items of new business, consideration of adopting an ordinance, amending Section 7-7, 7-33, and 7-34 of the city code pertaining to animal care and control. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Mr. Erwin?
Counsel, this is a housekeeping measure. During the 2019 session, the General Assembly amended provisions of the state animal control laws to expand the definition of what constitutes animal cruelty, to make it an offense to allow your dog to run at large in packs, and to impose a additional penalty on an individual who allows their dog to run at large in a pack. So what we're proposing to do tonight is simply amend the provisions in the city code so they parallel the changes in the state code that will go into effect on July 1st. Yes, I'm not sure the, the city has a problem with dogs running at large in packs, but the General Assembly has added that to the state code to, as a special, you know, definition and, and a special penalty provision for an owner who would allow that to happen.
All right, Councilmember Wright?
Madam Mayor, I would move that we adopt the changes as, as recommended.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan, I saw your hand too.
No, I'm...
Okay.
You don't want to second?
No, I'll second it, but I was, I was just wondering how I was going to instruct my dogs to animal behavior.
Don't let them run in a pack.
All right, well, thank you. The motion has been made a second. Councilmember Helgason?
I'm sorry, I was, so this is just because of language change, is what you said?
All we're doing is our ordinance will parallel the upcoming changes in the state code.
I mean, is it required that we have to be the same as...
If we're going to adopt local ordinances, they have to be consistent with the state code.
Okay.
All right, thank you. If there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. And the motion passes five with two absent. Thank you, and we are adjourned for the evening.